This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
I would like to call to order the Brighton Central School District Board of Education reorganizational meeting of July 1, 2021. The first order of business is the election of our Board of Education President and Vice President for the 2021-2022 year. Are there any nominations for the Office of President?
I would like to nominate Larry Davis for President.
Any one second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Are there any nominations for the Office of Vice President?
I would nominate Julian Gilbert.
Second. Karen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Larry Davis will serve as the President of the Board of Education for the 2021-2022 school year. Julian Gilbert will serve as Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2021-2022 school year.
So, I'll ask for everyone's patience as I do this for the first time. If I make a mistake, I just ask that somebody raise their hand and tell me that I did so, and we'll thank them and I promise. Our first order of business is an approval of the agenda, and before we approve that agenda, we need to amend it to include an 8:30 executive session meeting to review a negotiation for a particular real estate transaction.
So moved? Second?
By Susan and seconded by Andrea.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
There you go.
I'll get it.
You got it.
Approval of minutes from the June 15, 2021 business meeting.
So moved? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It was moved by Karen and seconded by Christina. Thank you. Next up is public participation, and I know we have some people here to participate, because I understand that the purpose of public participation is to make sure we hear feedback from those in the audience. While we can respond to factual questions, this is not a debate forum where we're going to have a long discussion. We ask that people try to center it at or about 30, about 3 minutes round, not 30 minutes, 3 minutes. We're not going to shut anybody off, but we ask that you focus to a 3-minute timeframe. So I've got cards here, I'm gonna call them in the order they were given to me. Dr. Judy Messera. Dr. Messera, you can pull your mask down while you're speaking.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dr. Judy Messera, I'm a professor emeritus at SUNY Brockport. I've lived at 126 Idlewood Road for 34 years. My son received a wonderful education in the Brighton School District, and I have always been a big supporter of the school district. I think our tax money is well spent on it. The sale of Brookside School has disturbed me because it's proceeded largely without public input or even any kind of widespread notice. The district is falling well short of what I would consider adequate communication with Brighton residents. The only communication on this, the only meeting about the sale was on June 10, and that was at a fairly late date in the process, we're now learning. The meeting was announced only three days ahead of time by email, sent just to parents of current students and others who may have been on the district email list. Many in my neighborhood, myself included, never received any notice directly from the school district about the meeting. Judging from my interactions at the farmer's market last week, even now, many Brighton residents are unaware that the property is being sold. This is a serious and frankly disappointing lack of communication that I think reflects poorly on the school board and the school district. Many of us expected much more of you. The district, in their documents, has viewed Brookside as a liability. Many of us view nearly 22 acres of public land as an asset, especially in a landlocked town like ours that has far less public space than many of the suburbs to our ease. This public land is about to be sold into private hands without any discussion of the options. Once it's sold, we'll never get it back. Brookside is not even being sold to the highest bidder, but to the first offer that was received. Would any of us sell our houses this way? It's my understanding that income from the leases covers the annual operating costs at Brookside, so at least in the short term, the property is not costing the school district or the taxpayers any money. So it seems to me that we have time for more community input about what to do with the property. A decision of this magnitude requires much more public discussion than a single meeting, especially when only a portion of the district residents receive any notice of it. The potential sale has not even received as much attention as a yearly budget proposal, when in reality, it has more far-reaching consequences than any single school year budget. It may be legal, it is legal, for the school board to sell the property, but I question whether it's ethical. I think that the owners of the Brookside campus, namely the Brighton taxpayers, should decide whether to remove the property from the public domain. I consider this a major budgetary decision that should be put to a district-wide vote. 161 residents who signed my petition agree with you. I thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board.
Thank you.
Judy, can I, I just want to make one comment, not to debate anything, but just for clarity. You mentioned not being sold to the highest bidder, and you are correct, that is to the only offer, but I just want to make sure, in terms of language for anybody that's viewing this later, to point out that there isn't any other bidder, there wasn't any other bidder. I don't want to give the impression to anybody that there was a choice made to sell to a lower bidder for any particular reason. You are correct, it was the only bidder, and in the process, we've received no inquiries in a well-known process in the commercial real estate world from any other entity interested. So, Emily, I'm not debating you, I just want to make sure, in terms of language, that we're pointing out factually that that's the case.
Okay, and may I also point out that the property was never publicly advertised for sale?
You are correct, absolutely. And then the second item in terms of, you are also correct relative to the lease payments covering the operating cost of the building, and actually, the district nets $40,000 a year in those transactions. There are very immediate needs relative to repairs and capital needs within the building that are very significant. So that's the, it is both a short-term and a long-term issue, and I just want to make sure we're clear on expressing that as well.
I understand.
Thanks, Judy.
Next up, and I'm gonna try this last name, I apologize if I get it incorrectly, Alexandra Turzia. Was I close?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Alex Turzia, and I live in the Meadowbrook neighborhood. What I'd like to say is that, you know, all technicalities aside, whatever the school board can or cannot legally do, the question I'd like to ask is, is this what the school board sees as an appropriate way to treat the Brighton community? I mean, why, just as a matter of principle, don't you think that you need to present this plan openly to Brighton residents? The issue here is really how our town is run. I'm actually pretty shocked and disappointed to see how this has been handled, which is to say, without a full discussion and a debate with town residents. The Brookside School is a community asset, it's not just an issue for Evans Farms. It is one of the few remaining pieces of land in our mostly developed town, and once this passes into private hands, there is no assurance that we'll ever get it back. We should be having a full-blown public conversation about what we, the people of Brighton, would like to do with this unique asset. I know the proposal to remodel the building into a two-story school a few years ago was rejected, but there's a lot of room for reimagining what could be done with it that's between that previous proposal and selling it to an unsolicited buyer. The whole range of options should be up for discussion. If the school board feels that selling the property is the best option, then you should be making that case to the whole community. And if the conclusion is to sell it, then that should happen through a publicly announced sale that can elicit competitive bids, maximizing the revenue and the benefit to the citizen taxpayers of Brighton. The current proposal is being handled in a way that certainly creates the appearance of stealth. I think one reason there is relatively few people here today is because it actually would never occur to most Brightonians that their local government could or would dispose of a community asset without adequate notice and opportunity for debate. They trust you not to do this. Democracy begins at home. Good government and trust begin at home. What kind of example does it set in front of young people, our young people at Brighton, if our local leaders handle a community asset as though it were yours to dispose of? This is a very teachable moment. Burying a topic like this somewhere in the 2017-2018 capital improvement budget, or on a weekday morning meeting, or sending emails only to a subset of all taxpayers soon after an election, at the start of summer vacation, these are not profiles in democracy. Brighton kids should see and hear their elders talking, maybe arguing about choices for our town. Fairness through process, that's really the essence of the democratic system, it's a very hard value to instill, and we shouldn't miss this opportunity to show the younger generation how our community members can make decisions together, what the "our" in "our town" means. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel Rhine?
Okay, I, my name is Sam, Samuel Rhine.
I apologize.
Normally, I don't answer when people call me Rhine.
I apologize.
I'm not a Rhine, but anyway. I moved to Evans Farm in 1972, and the reason I did that is because through certain research, I realized that Brighton is number one as far as education is concerned. We had basically just gotten to the United States. I grew up in Bolivia in South America. It was a little bit tough in the pocket, but both my wife and I decided that this is what we wanted, that's what we're gonna be. And luckily, we wound up in one of the greatest, most beautiful neighborhoods in town, believe it or not, and I'm familiar with many others. When I heard this, I heard it on a private little poker game that we have, nickel and dime, believe it or not, for the last 45 years. Somebody asked me, said, "Sam, what do you think of the sale of Brookside?" I said, "What the hell are you talking about? This is somebody that lives in Brighton but on the other side, close to Highland." But this is a person that knows Rochester inside out and upside down. When he hears a rumor, it is more than a rumor, I was really upset, for one reason. Number one, we were never notified, as was previously stated. Number two, that people investigate or interested in finding out about maintenance and caring for property? Obviously not. How much do you really know about the Talmudic Institute? I bet you're not a hell of a lot.
Actually, sir, can I just interrupt you for one second? Because this is going to an area that I feel it's important to just make a comment before you go any further. I want to be clear. We know the purchaser, we have interacted with the purchaser, we have a tremendous amount of faith in the purchaser, and the concept of "those people" is not respectful, kind, thoughtful, or what we are about. So you can continue to say what you want to say, I would like to, for the record, for people here, to point out the "those people" conversation is a struggle for us, because that's not institutionally, organizationally, how we operate. "We know quite a bit and we're looking forward to a partnership," is the answer from the district. Thank you.
When I talk about "those people," those are my people. I'm Jewish. I'm a holder for Survivor, sir. I know a lot of people in the Talmudic Institute. I know they do not take care of property. I know people that have worked with them and for them. So please, I know what you're insinuating. Drop it, forget it.
I only say that because it has been brought up to us several times, and I respect both your survivorship and your faith. And I will say to you that I thought it was important to point that out, in defense of a group of people who have been publicly, by your neighborhood association, called out in the very same way, and we do not want to be a part of that criticism, is the only reason I say that, respectfully. And you have a different opinion, which I just wanted to make sure it was clear how we felt about that.
Unfortunately, sir, it's more than an opinion. People that have worked with them, Jewish people like me, asked me, "Are you aware of it?" I was not aware of it at that point. They worked with them, they saw their behavior. I come from an ultra-also-lack Jewish family, I may not be now. I know the ins and outs, upside down and inside out. I was brought up by a lady, by my mother, who had three titles. She was a daughter, she was a wife, and she was a mother. Those are the greatest three titles you could have had. As far as education is concerned, sir, zilch. She never finished 7th grade, but she was smarter than any people that I know by the present time. My problem is, I was trying to find the definition for politician, there is none. I hate politicians. We were not told the truth, that's what bothers me. One of the main reasons we came to this great country is because we knew we would always have the truth. We did not. We did not, friends. And I do have a lot of friends, regardless. In some circles, I'm known as loco, L-O-C-O, which means crazy in Spanish. You know why? Because I tell it like it is. What you say is what you get. If you don't like it, don't be my friend. But please, tell me the truth. Tell me why you're doing it. Don't tell me that I don't have the right to know. Don't tell me that because I don't have any kids in the district, I don't get any information, because this is what you ladies and gentlemen did. You send out, you're sending information only to the parents of the kids that are currently in school, but when it comes to voting, you also need my vote, not just those parents. Is that part of honesty? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhine. John Terry?
Good morning. My name's John, I live at 285 Idlewood Road. I have two boys in Brighton Central School. I've actually corresponded with you, Dr. McGowan, and found our interactions to be delightful. You guys are responsive, you do a wonderful job, and I really think your hearts are in the right place. I think there's a clear theme this morning, though, and that is that the community's not aware of what's happening. I have specific concerns with some aspects of the transaction that perhaps I'll spend time on, but what we're asking for today is simply of the way to the decision, so that debates taking place today, passionate, technical, legal and otherwise, can actually happen. You know, I am a parent, and I didn't know until I saw Judy Steiner. I had no opportunity to go knock on doors, I intended to, but while I was walking my dog around the neighborhood, I was stopping people. Nobody knew, guys, nobody knew. I talked to 18 people, 17 people signed, I didn't have time to get the petition to Judy. One person declined, not because they like it, because they trust you guys, and said, "Well, they're gonna do the right thing," and they were on their way to vacation. So I think the theme of lack of awareness, which is a fairly objective and fair point to make, is one that I hope you guys take to heart, and just delay the vote today. Let us talk about it. And if I had a week to go knock on doors, I think I'd have 1,000 signatures based on my hit rate. You know, I've done a lot of this, and you're about 1 for 10 when I was knocking doors for Bloomberg. For this, I was 9 for 10. So the community's concerned, guys, and I think that's the overriding message. In terms of the content of the transaction, just a couple editorial points, and I won't go on. The finances don't work at an optic level for me, I don't get it. 4 million doesn't feel like enough, 40,000 doesn't feel like enough revenue, and if we have a money problem, let's go make some tax money instead of giving it away to a not-for-profit organization. My second thought is not to discriminate against Orthodox Jews, is to ask this question: Is this the widest and most beneficial use case for this wonderful asset, not just for Brighton, but for greater Rochester? Are we not the grandfathers of redlining? And are we not all benefiting in this room from redlining that took place 150 years ago? And don't we want to do something about that? So what we're doing now is getting more money for us and building a new red line around Brookside School. And I personally object to that. So, you know, just in closing, I don't intend to criticize any individuals here, I think you're all wonderful people. Give us a chance to talk about this. Listen to us, we have some great ideas, we have resources, and we'd like you to delay this decision. Thanks for your time today, guys.
Thank you. Aaron Reina?
So, for anybody that doesn't know me, I lead the Evans Farm Neighborhood Association. I had some thoughts in mind, but in hearing a comment from Kevin, I'm gonna clarify something and use that for what I want to say. I want to start by saying, my family pronounces my last name Rhina. Larry wouldn't know that, and it's okay. We're from Sicily, it's a Spanish word, and we say it like Germans, because my grandfather grew up near Franklin High School in downtown Rochester, and at the time, his family was told, in the 20s, "You can't come here, you're Italians." So they started saying it like the Rhine River in Germany. So for anybody that sees me outside of here now, you know how to say it, you know a little bit about where I'm at. We've had some amazing dialogues as a neighborhood over the last couple of years about inclusion, predating a lot of the DEI activities in the neighborhood and in the community. In the notes that I wrote, the minutes that Kevin's referring to, there were conversations in the neighborhood meeting with concerns relative to the buyer. I'm not gonna rehash them, I'm not gonna debate them. The word "diversity" was used in that context. If I were to editorialize and change those, I would re-change them in hindsight to the word "inclusion." And again, I'm not gonna debate it here, I will talk offline and make sure that I'm understanding it. I had no intention of going down this road this morning, but this is an educational facility. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are important in our community, and especially important in Brighton, we're leading the way in that in a lot of ways. My daughter comes home, more often than not, from Council Rock and now Fresno, talking to us about appreciating other people, appreciating other cultures, learning how to get friends to come out of their chairs and talk to her, learning how to approach that person that doesn't communicate with her, learning how to become friends. No one in this room was raised with that mentality from a school district, and if you were, please tell me, because I would love to know where you grew up. I grew up two towns over. We didn't have any diversity, and I can tell you stories about it, but I won't do it here. What I can tell you is, this is a phenomenal learning experience and a phenomenal opportunity for all of us to learn how to dialogue, so I'm gonna openly say I will own that miscommunication. I will own that as an adult. I'm 45, I'm not a kid anymore. None of us are. But we all need to work on how we can communicate those things, and the number of conversations that I've had offline, where people end the dialogue with, "I don't know how to talk about this, I don't know how to express this, I don't know how to be frustrated, I don't know how to say it," and "Don't say it in public." We need that time to have that dialogue. So if my daughter can learn it in Fresno, we can learn it at a board meeting, we can learn it in a community, we can learn how to have that conversation openly and honestly. But we need time to do that. The one thing that I intended to say this morning, that's always impressed me about the Brighton School District, is that we're forward-thinking, we're planning for tomorrow. My childhood school district taught me how to be a CEO. They didn't tell me how to think forward in life or in a global community. The Brighton community has done that, I've watched my daughter do it. She came home yesterday from camp and started telling me things that she learned. I listened to her language. We can do that together. This needs to not be a board decision. This needs to be an example for our community and our kids, that we're not afraid to have the dialogue and put it up for a public vote, a referendum. And it has nothing to do with the buyer, although it does factor into some people's considerations, as we've already heard. It factors into process, and we want those kids to become, when they become adults and move in and buy our homes from us, or buy homes somewhere else in the community, when we send them out to be seeds of progress. I'm asking you, please, do not take action to approve this in a board room. Let's please do it by referendum. Give my neighbors a chance to make their conversations heard. Give all of us a chance to have that dialogue and grow together. And I mean that with the utmost respect. You've all put in a ton of time, Larry and I have had some great conversations, Kevin's always been extremely responsive to me whenever I send things, I commend all of you for that. We do have questions to the town, and I'm trying to help separate those concepts and help people understand them, but we need time to be able to do that in a respectful, calm, peaceful way, and all we're asking for is time. Thanks.
Thank you. Jody Siegel, who we obviously know, stay to hear your work. You want to speak? Okay, great.
Good morning, everyone. I live at 30 Hunter's Lane in Evans Farm, and for those of you who don't know me, I spent a great part of my life sitting at the table where you are now, and many other years actually working in Brookside, as the Executive Director of Monroe County School Boards Association. My involvement with Brighton is deeply felt, and this is a community that I love, and I find it very strange to be speaking to the board with something that I disagree with on process. I've never been in that situation before. My concern here is the matter of time and the fact that Brookside is an invaluable resource to the community. I've, since I've spent time in the building, working there for a number of years, I see how much it is used by the community. Since I live near enough to hear the grounds, I hear the continuous play of children, of teams, even cricket teams on weekends. Past year, it's been quieter because of the pandemic, but it's really clear that this community uses and takes for granted the availability of that space, both inside the building and outside. And for that, and I've lived in Brighton 40, since 1979, and was part of the early fights to get open space. When I moved to Brighton, the only town land, the only park was immediately behind the town hall, and the community clamored for more parks and space, and the town board and town leadership at that time was resistant, and it actually took a major change before there was leadership in the town that was receptive to getting the parkland we have today, which is wonderful. But, and, but people think Brookside is part of the land that's available to them, and its loss as a community asset is something that I think would be deeply felt. I have tremendous confidence in the intelligence and creative thinking of people in Brighton, and I believe if there were community-wide discussion about this, there could probably be a solution that would save the property for the community and solve the school district's problems and work for everyone. But I haven't seen an opportunity for that discussion to take place in the last month, when most of this has been more visible. People have been in- People have been incredibly busy, the school year was wrapping up, the world was opening up. In my own life, family members who I haven't seen in a very long time, including my grandchildren and all my children, who I hadn't seen since probably November 2019, came to visit. And I've been completely preoccupied with the goings-on that are part of the pandemic ending and the world opening. And I don't think my situation is unique. Having said that I have confidence in this community to find a solution to keep this as a publicly available entity, I would like there to be an opportunity for that to be explored. Thank you. Good luck with working your way through this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Do you wanna make a comment?
No, just, well, I say no and then I make a comment, so I guess I do. Appreciating the feedback, one, and thank you for that and for the comments. And again, want to say to Mr. Rin, I respect your perspective and don't want our exchange to come off as disrespectful of your experience or your perspective, so thank you. And then...
I hope you don't take it personally.
Likewise, I do not. But it is much more personal for you, and I wouldn't want my comments to be taken personally by you, so thank you for that. And then we are sending a letter out, given the holiday and the time it takes to send a letter to nearly 11,000 people. The community will have information following the board's action or decisions today. And so that will come to all residents over the next week or so, it takes time for that mail to arrive. I have communicated with Dr. Mosser about and Jody Siegel regarding the petition requirements, and that information has been posted to the website as well. So in the interest of full transparency and disclosure, the requirements, the number of signatures needed and the legal basis for that determination is all being provided to you to research yourself and look further into, but that's through our attorneys at Harris Beach. Beyond that, again, thank you for sharing your thoughts today, that's just from my perspective.
Dr. McGowan, have you swayed you guys today? Have you asked that question? Have you had a new patent? It's a simple ask to delay a decision.
So...
The urgency doesn't, we're not sure why it's voted. I'm sorry, which way is mine?
No, no, it's all right. One, I wouldn't want to speak on behalf of the board as the people who would vote on it, right? My role is to recommend an action, and in the way the checks and balances work in our governmental situation, it's actually, Jody knows more about this than anybody in the room. It's a fascinating dynamic, the way legislation, as it were, is proposed, and then the board has to act on that. Likewise, the board typically, other than in some rare legal circumstances, doesn't act without the superintendent recommending. So I can't speak on behalf of the board. Other than to say to you also that, as Larry introduced public comment, even the back and forth, you know, that was offered, I guess the board, as they vote later in the agenda, will indicate to you whether or not you've swayed.
Will you want your partners to be successful? And you have this. I hope you're very, you are speaking for a large group. Thank you for letting me.
You bet. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a comment here as well. Everybody knows that I live in Evans Farm. Mr. Rin, I apologize for initially mispronouncing your name. I don't take any of this personally. I take a little bit of umbrage. One of the speakers made a statement that said, slide, I forget how it was stated, so I'm gonna paraphrase and not quote. Slide an amendment in about the Council Rock expansion in May of '17. And since I was involved in that initiative, both from a Brighton Parks and Rec Committee as well as a school board standpoint, nothing was slid in. That was an overt statement that said to the community, "Do we want to reengage Brookside as a K-2 school, or do we want to expand Council Rock?" And the decision was made to expand Council Rock. As an Evans Farm neighborhood resident, I voted to expand Council Rock. There was concerns about increased bus traffic in Evans Farm. There was concern about the possibility of mandated sidewalks, which many people didn't want in Evans Farm. It was also cheaper to expand Council Rock from that standpoint than it was to reengage Brookside. But that was a very public forum. I was in seven separate sessions in this room reviewing feedback from both neighborhoods because some of the Council Rock neighbors were not thrilled with the idea of construction equipment being in their neighborhoods and things like that. So nothing was slipped in in May of '17. It was a very public debate and discussion that had tax implications. And nobody knew, I didn't know, nobody knew what would happen to Brookside at that point, other than it wasn't gonna be a school in the School District. And maybe this is lost for some people, or maybe people aren't aware of it. Council Rock, with the expansion, was constructed for the possibility of further expansion. So there isn't an opportunity to go back to Brookside in that, there isn't a need to go back to Brookside in that regard. So we effectively said, "Brookside is no longer going to be a school in our portfolio," which is different than, "It's not gonna be an asset for the community," and I understand that. But we made a public referendum decision to say, "We're not gonna turn Brookside back on." And there was nothing hidden about that. And while nobody, we never put for-sale signs on it afterwards, it just sat there, and then we received this offer. And as the people who set the tax rate each year in a school budget, we have responsibility to look at those offers. And in some cases, we've gotta understand the financial implications to the entire community. That's different than, "Do I love green space? I'm a very active environmentalist." But there are things this board is responsible to do on behalf of the entire community when we receive an offer like this, that doesn't allow us to sort of say, "We're really not sure. We have some fiduciary responsibilities as a board." I appreciate everybody's feedback today. It's important that we hear from everybody, and I appreciate the respectfulness of the dialogue and the back and forth. I think that's it.
I apologize for what I said. And I apologize in my own sin. I didn't mean that what I said would be the whole discussion allowed whether or not to make Brookside a real property school. I mean, I consider that discussion to be a model. Yep, no, absolutely, that is what I was saying. That was a really, really public discussion, there was a lot of effort. And I did notice some things about that. And I think that was absolutely the way the School District should go, besides... I think that was, like I said, really the model. What I was told, and this information, I would concede, is second-hand, and I was in this court. I was told that, you know, story to sell the building was embedded in what I think would have been one of the name, bunch of homes, and that was... Where that ability to just sell it was not publicized. It was just, you know, somewhere in an awful lot of language, and that would be, you know, part of the approval by the public to sell it. Now, maybe that's, maybe I misunderstood, maybe I wasn't told right. But I did not, certainly did not, in the discussion about whether or not it should be a partnership. So I apologize.
That's a good clarification, I appreciate that.
Can I just? I think what's fascinating is we find ourselves all in an incredibly unique circumstance. And I want to acknowledge the fair point you've made regarding process. It is not the normal way, if I looked at the different ways that we process decisions in the district. The decision itself is not at all normal either. I was speaking with a colleague, who's, I've been a superintendent for 15 years, here in somewhere else, and a colleague who has a little bit longer, who's a Boise District Superintendent in another area. And he said, "Walk me through that." Now, this is a person who, in part of his role on behalf of the State Ed Department, would navigate some of the complicated nature of these issues and had no idea, from a technical perspective, how the notion of a referendum versus board action, et cetera, works, right? This is a very, the negotiation of a real estate transaction for a district and selling a property rarely, if ever, happens. To your point, it's land, then, that is, can I come back? So it absolutely is different from, you know, our large committees, our 50% committee determine how many paperclips to buy. And I say that respectfully because that level of collaboration is something we value, we encourage, we foster. It's part of who we are. So this is a unique circumstance, there is no question. And, you know, in our discussions, that certainly has been, you know, a concern, a question, something that has come up that we've contemplated because this is a group who is committed to that type of engagement, that kind of discussion, to the point that many of you made. The reality is, this is unique in that way. So that kind of engagement, you may disagree with and see differently and think that it should have been done differently. And I would say, speaking just for myself, but I feel like the coordinators would agree, we respect that point, that's a very good point. The circumstances dictated that different type of approach. And so I'm simply acknowledging that you're right, it has been different.
I think that's, I knew that's different, right? I think it creates a kind of pressure to be, I mean, I know I'm a little prager than the calls, but, you know, it doesn't look good to always send people to Paris, because they're not happy with the school right now. It doesn't look good to do a write-down for the main meeting, you know, and then, like you said, spending some vacation. It just, I, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a lie, but it's a huge impression. I don't think it's how you want it to come along.
Understand, understand. And again, it's the nature of a transaction that's rarely ever done in our work or in the public space. And balancing that with what is very similar to anybody who would be engaged in a competitive negotiation over a transaction like you would for your home. And how do you find the space in between that, which we've tried to do, and see it differently? And I appreciate your feedback.
I think I would like the board to consider that this has been a difficult decision for them. But wouldn't the decision be much easier if you actually had a mandate from the voters that Brookside should be sold? That's all we're really asking for. And you have a legitimate, you have a good case for why the district no longer needs Brookside. You have a good case that the offer that you received is a reasonable offer because you've had the property approved. Why not make that case for the public, bring it to a vote, and get a mandate from the taxpayers that they agree that this is a good idea to sell Brookside this time?
So I do want to point out at the end of the letter that we put out to you, the last piece is regarding a referendum versus the board taking action. The board did not have the option to decide to put it to referendum. The law requires it only to go to referendum based on a petition filed by taxpayers. So in other words, the board never had a conscious moment where they would have to make that decision. It is actually not their option to bring it to a referendum.
I did not read the state law as reading that, that selling the property had to be done by...
So our attorney has advised us that, and that's part of the material that I sent to you, with the references to comptroller's decisions and the law as it pertains to this. So again, it wasn't the board's option at that point. Whether or not they would have, it was not a choice to have been made. Your point, though, regarding engagement over the conversation during that process is well-taken, and that's a fair point. There's a difference between the gathering of feedback and engaging in conversation and the moving to a referendum. But moving to a referendum was not a decision point for the board to have been engaged in.
Kevin McGowan, if the board were to actively decide to send this to a referendum, what would it take legal action against the board? If that's legal prevention, and the board wanted to say, "No, we want the community to do this decision anyway," who would actually take that also against or legal action against the board?
Well, I can't speak to what would happen, or which group, or who could bring suit on behalf of taxpayers, where they would bring that. But to be honest, Aaron, whether or not, whichever agency it would be, if we know the law to say we can't do something, determining whether or not we should take an action based on whether we'd get caught or held accountable for it, wouldn't be an appropriate way for this board to operate.
Dr. McGowan, you acknowledge that the community should be able to apply to perhaps point their hands out. It feels to me like a pronunciate that you're being unobear enough to bar enough signatures to bring it to a referendum, you can't leave it to the court, I don't know. So I think the point that we have an opportunity to, to refer that referendum petition is probably the overarching level of consideration. I appreciate the fact that the procedural, like the legal reality, that we couldn't bring each other into account of those direct actions. But it seems like it was a project decision, or maybe you have a project decision. Now, let us know what was going on, so we can grab the signatures and close that up, man. That's not an accusation, it's just the way it looks to us.
Actually, let me clarify, though, so hopefully it will both be and look better. The period of time to gather signatures only begins after the board's adoption of the purchase and sale agreement, the 30-day time period. That would be what is on today's agenda. So that 30-day time period has not expired.
So if you vote yes, do you still have an opportunity to come in with the petition and say, "Let's go to a referendum"?
Yes.
That's good.
Guys, I have a question about that. I understand there's also some discrepancy between a board policy or a rent policy in the state law. And then the bar is lower, the lower the rent policy, there are many signatures needed for a smaller number. So in an objection of this petition, are people perduing their own policy about how many signatures they want?
No. The law actually pertaining to the transfer of real property defines how those, the number of signatures required and supersedes any board policy about propositions.
So when would the board, so what is the significance of the board policy? When would the board policy comply with the proposition?
If people wanted to present other propositions to the board, which doesn't typically happen, this would be specific, the law is specific with regard to real property, the transfer of real property.
Then if I could say those propositions generally pertain to the board deciding to spend taxpayer money, not about the sale program?
What is the target number of signatures? I'm trying to figure it out.
It's 16 Lewis sitting behind you, 1659, is that the correct number?
About 1653, I think. About 1653.
I believe that's articulated specifically in that memo as well.
That might sound like a concession, but if we came back and we reached with 1659, we'd be going right back to the decision. Is that correct?
Yes, you're right, you're right in the process is to present a petition to the district for it to go to referendum with that number of signatures. You bet.
The problem with laws, they're written for, by lawyers for lawyers. And I can't, excuse this person, but I can't do a damn thing about it. Every individual understands that specific law a different way. Depends how you feel inside. Lawyers don't do that. They have a set of rules and they follow them religiously. My brother was a lawyer, one of my nephews is a lawyer, one of my other nephews' wife is a lawyer. I got lawyers off the gear.
I can relate.
By the way, the reason I know you is because of the ornament I even brought.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if people realize that.
It's a Mack Bulldog on the front of a gray Honda Ridgeline.
Oh, you customize that, I was wondering what that was.
My wife reminds me why I can't do road rage.
I'm very familiar with Brighton, I'm very familiar with Brighton education, which is the greatest around.
Thank you.
And I'm very friendly with a lot of teachers. I've done a lot of speaking, and what, I don't know if you guys know. I've heard my name written on my head. But if you think birds, when I come to, when I come to, and suddenly, I find myself assuming things that is not in my mind as far as the United States. assuming things that is not in my mind as far as the noise they say. It's, it's for the people, by the people, isn't it? That's my concern.
Yep.
You don't know if I would have said no. I wouldn't have said no. But the, the point is, you never asked the question. That's all we're asking. Give us a chance, but don't leave it like this. Expand it. And don't tell me you need 1600 signatures because 16,000 people have voted. No, they're not. How many people voted on the last school board election? 2,000? Maybe?
Less, I think.
Yeah, a little bit, I don't have that number in front of me, but I think a little bit less than that.
So, you know, so why don't we vote with 10%? What the heck?
Well, here...
Because the law prescribes the, the other number, so that's...
That's what I said. Most, I have written by lawyers for a lawyer.
Right.
We were hopeful about it, and now we're not. The process, I can't, I'm sorry. That's what I'm trying to do, is that, I mean, we're all lawyer up, I guess, if there's some signatures, but there's, there's people who are parts of who we advise on, too. There's a sincere rule in there, so this is slow down. I think we're caught up in technicalities, we just, a lot of lawyer letters, that's what all day. But we're trying to get sort of emotionally on, right, that we do, that's a consideration. Usually, the secrecy is what you have to do. I think you're a really talented guy.
I will speak on behalf of the board and thank everyone for their comments today, for their honesty and their candor. Appreciate everybody being here. And I'm going to close public participation at this point. There's a number of other, this is the first day of the new school year. We'll make note that Esther Wilson, newly-elected board member, is not here. She's on, Esther Winter.
Winter.
I apologize. I'm doing names today. Esther Winter is on vacation with her son, who just graduated, so we miss her today. She's not here, but we welcome her when she gets here. Thank you. Kim, I'm going to need your help here. We have a long list of organizational requirements that talk to people's positions, and I don't know if we do this line item.
No.
Okay.
You don't. So, you're just going to say, consideration of organizational requirements, A through...
E? E, I believe, on the back of page six? Move to consider under item six, consideration of organizational requirements, a number of position appointments for the coming school year that include, up through, including page six on the current amended agenda, up through letter E.
Seven.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, approval of transportation contracts.
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, moved by Andrea, seconded by Christina. All those in... I'm sorry, any discussion? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, resolution to approve the superintendent contract term. This is the updated contract for Dr. McGowan, as we have discussed. Any discuss, I'm doing, oh, sorry, motion to approve.
So, move.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Susan.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say for the record that we are so lucky that Kevin is with us. He's a leader here in Brighton, he's a leader across the state, he's a leader in his national organization, and I couldn't be more pleased to be able on this today.
Appreciate that. Any other discussion? Agreed, by the way.
We can just add that this then extends his contract to five years, which is the legal limit of what we can do. So, it will extend his contract so that, to cover the next five years.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Approved. Article number nine, resolution to approve the purchase and sale agreement for Brookside School.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Julene, seconded by Karen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 10, approval of a bond resolution of the Board of Education, of the Brighton Central School District, authorizing 3.6 million in serial bonds of the district to finance a portion of the capital improvement project.
So, move.
Moved by Andrea.
Second.
Seconded by Sue. Any discussion?
Do you need third, final, or final? You want to be a favor? Are you concerned?
No, I don't think so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item, this is a good testament, I don't have numerals. Item 11, approval of memorandums of agreement between the Brighton Central School District and the Brighton Teachers Association.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Christina. Any discussion?
These are both just relatively minor arrangements about particular variations from the contract.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed. Approval of treasures report for the period ending May 31st, 2021. This is item 12 on the agenda.
So, move.
Moved by Andrea.
Second.
Seconded by Christina.
Is there anything you want to add?
All those in favor? All right. Jeez, I just noticed this, Kim, the consent agenda, on the agenda is listed as 12 also. That should probably be 13, but that's okay. We have a number of different items on here. I'm just looking.
Gifts.
Gifts?
There are gifts.
Okay, there are gifts.
It was a violin and a case.
I don't have that in front of me, so I apologize. A couple of fundraising activities to note under F, and then, gift of some music.
A violin, case, and bow. From Mr. Andrew Desmond.
From Andrew Desmond, on behalf of the Visual Performing Arts Department of the Brighton Central School District, this is from Dr. Lena. I'd like to thank you for the donation that was made to our music department, the donation of the violin case and bow will support students here at Brighton. So, donation of musical equipment, that's very nice. In regards to the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Who made the motions almost for the consent? I missed that.
I don't know if he did.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Moved by Karen.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sue.
Thank you.
Final is adjourned to executive session to discuss a particular personnel matter.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Julene, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.